Welcome to the North Bend City Council Regular Session Agenda, Tuesday, October 25th, 2022, here in the council chambers at 7:00 PM. Tonight, we are honored to have House Representative Boomer Wright join us and he can help us say the Pledge of Allegiance. Boomer, would you lead us? All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome. And welcome to those of you who are here in the council chambers and welcome to those of you who are watching online, live or at a later point. And after the number one agenda item was the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll move on to some ceremonial items. We have two pieces of ceremonial business tonight. One B is North Bend's U.S. High School Champion Bowler. And two C is North Bend K-12 Summer Enrichment Program. And so I am going to ask our House Representative Boomer Wright if he can come forward. And he's going to tell you a little bit about something special that we were able to do. Boomer, we have been in contact about a very special student here at North Bend High School. And we'll go ahead and let you start by telling us the process of what happened.
Well, thank you for the invitation and it is an honor to be here to honor a very special individual in North Bend, the high school national champion. It's amazing. I was, it was a short time ago when Jessica, Mayor Jessica and David called me and said they had a very special person, an event that happened here in North Bend. Would there be some way we could do a proclamation from the governor? And so I contacted the governor's office and she was very pleased to be able to do that. So this after, this afternoon, we had a special little dinner at North Bend Lanes, which some of you were in attendance, and to honor this young man. So, and he was presented then with the, with the proclamation from the governor. So if I may, I'd like to introduce Keon. Would you come up forward and talk to us a little bit?
All right. And I think what we'll do is we'll have you come forward just for those who are watching at home can see your smiling face on the camera. And we have a copy of the letter as well, right? Yeah.
Yeah, Mike as well.
Coach is here. Come on up. And I know this is our mic, right?
Yes, that is technically your mic.
Now, I know Boomer is
loud. Why don't you just get just a little bit forward?
Would you like me to read this or would you like?
All right, you guys come over a little bit forward here and then
I'll step over here. There we go. To Keon Pryor says, Dear Keon, I recently learned of your excellent performance on the 2022 U.S. High School Bowling National Championship, which was held in June. I'm ready to congratulate you on becoming the national high school bowling champion. I'm sure your family, your teammates, coaches, teachers, the community are proud of you. Your reputation for hard work, putting in hours of practice while also being a full-time high school student, and dedication to bowling is known well beyond North Bend High School Bulldogs bowling team. I am so proud that the 2022 High School Bowling National Champion came from North Bend. I'm confident that this is only one victory out of many to come. I applaud you for the hard work and wish you the best for your bright future. Thank you for representing our state so well and making us proud. May this victory push you to pursue more achievements both on and off the bowling lanes. On behalf of the people of Oregon, congratulations on winning the 2022 U.S. High School Bowling National Championships. Governor Kate Brown.
All right. Congratulations. Well, we did promise Keon we wouldn't make him give any more speeches because we've been celebrating him for quite a while, but we're just, we're so proud of you and we're so honored that you're from North Bend and all, everything that you've done. But Coach, would you like to say anything?
Well, I'm just hoping this is the first step of many. And like I said, he's one of the hardest working young men that I know for his sport. And I can't think of anybody that serves at home.
Yeah, you're a great coach and mom.
Yeah, same. I'm just, you know, happy that he did what he said he was going to do and he puts in the practice and the work. And that's what I've tried to instill in him is that, you know, hard work will get you whatever it is that you want. So I'm proud of him for that.
All right. So we'll be back here in just a few more months, right? For the second national championship, right? All right. Well, we'll give you another big round of applause.
We'll see you on those lanes, right?
Okay, all right, Mr. City Administrator, we have another item of ceremonial business, the North Bend K-12 Summer Enrichment Program. Would you like to share with us about that?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council, as you are aware, we finished up a very, very aggressive K-12 Youth and Families Enrichment Program. And we were very grateful to receive what essentially was state funding. It's funding, in fact, that our state representative Boomer Wright has supported and has helped guide at the state level. And so we were very, very proud to be able to get $400,000 and spend it on the youth in the K-12 North Bend School District. And, you know, I'm not saying that everybody was from North Bend. We turned nobody away. And so we advertised it that way because the grant said that we had to. And so you saw previously a video of a lot of the events that occurred. The priority for the state-funded grant was to really close the gap for students that were underserved in our social systems and namely education. And Madam Mayor, it was actually something that was said while we were recognizing Keon that, you know, I don't think a lot of us understood that, you know, when, when we shut down in March of 2020, that a lot of these youth did not have the same experiences you and I had during our high school years. And this man's now a senior and we're still dealing with COVID in some respects. And so this grant funds allowed us to do so much. So we finished out the reporting. I will say that North Bend was able to equip, encourage, excite, and engage more than 1,000 youth in 58 unique learning programs throughout the summer. And I'd be remiss if I didn't take time. There were so many folks involved, staff, volunteers. And as we do with our traditional volunteers, we'll be recognizing them. But there's one person that I wanted to point out, and I think we confused a lot of people in the public because every time they saw Stephanie, they're like, well, what are you doing in North Bend? And it's like, well, she spends a lot of time. My goodness, how many years was she at K-Doc in North Bend? And now she's over handling communications for the Coos County Airport District. And so you'll even see her even more. But I wanted to take this time to bring her up and give the council an opportunity to really say thank you. And when I say really thank you, I mean, like, hand her this envelope. And so Stephanie, if you'll come up with your husband, who by the way volunteered 100%. We hired Stephanie and her husband came as a tutor. So this is an opportunity if you want to come down and we'll take a photo with her. Give her a nice little
Well, we are so pleased. So how many touches did we, did I hear you say before?
We had, we know over 1,000 individual touchpoint youth. Some of them were repeated. And so we, when we actually look at the repeat of how many with all the events, just looking at the bowling and the soccer and the movie nights and the touch, et cetera. Our count is just shy of 3,000 parents and students that were touched K-12 and then entry level into college. And so that was just a phenomenal program all the way around. Come on. Guys gotta get together like we like each other. Actually, hey, counselor, but and then Counselors Slater, you're hiding a little. So come on in. That one, I can see ya. All right, ready? One, two, three. Oh, you can just hand that to her. There we go. Stephanie, from the bottom of my heart, from all of the staff, we could not have pulled this off. You were tenacious. I know you worked through some of the nights because I heard it from your husband. And I'm sorry about the folder issue that happened in the 11th hour, but she's a real trooper. She persevered. And the stories, the heartfelt stories that we got from the parents that we were able to share back with the state. We photographed everything, we videoed everything. There's not a doubt that no child in North Bend could have said they were bored the summer or had nothing to do. And it's in part for your leadership in making that happen. So thank you.
Well, we appreciate you and we thank you and you, sir, for everything that you guys did this summer. And I know Stephanie's hard. She's just taking some of these families even under her wing and don't have lifelong Oh, yeah. And we have a beautiful video that you made out on social media and I'll reshare that again so people can see it all the highlights. Yeah.
Thank you, Stephanie.
And hubby too.
All right. Last night, we had some counselors that were out of town and some that were ill. And so we didn't have a quorum and had to cancel our work session. So I'm going to go ahead and take the item from the work session that was number two. And that was Counselor Noroff, you had a request to discuss approved September 27th, 2022 meeting minutes. I'm going to take that and I'm going to move that to other business tonight so that we can make sure we can take a look at that. So it's just going to get organized here. Oh, it's on the back page. Always messes me up when it's on the back page. So other business will be work session item two. Okay. All right. So we'll go ahead and go down the, the agenda here. I'm hoping that you counselors, even though we didn't have the work session last night, that you were able to look at the items under the consent calendar. A through D. Was there any items in here that anybody wanted to pull out of the consent calendar?
I would like to pull item A, the approval of the minutes from October 11th of the consent calendar.
Okay. All right. We'll go ahead and pull those out. So we can go ahead and I guess we'll go ahead and start with, should we go ahead and start with A, then go over that or approve B through D first?
Um, go ahead and move A to other business, if you will, and then you can put it ahead of the other one, Madam Mayor.
Perfect. So under other business will be consent calendar A. And so is there a motion to approve the consent calendar B, C, and D?
I'm able to approve the consent calendar item B two and B.
Okay, I hear, yes, I hear first from Counselor Slater and a second, or I'm sorry, first from Counselor Ball and a second from Counselor Slater. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving the consent calendars B, C, and D is presented, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Number four on the list is public comments. Thank you for participating in public comment this evening. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has three minutes to speak and our governing body takes the input into consideration. However, in observance with Oregon open meeting laws, this isn't a time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city administrator and city recorder are taking notes of any action if needed. So Macy, I know we have two people in person tonight. Was there anybody else online? Okay. All right. So the first person I see here is Natalie Ranker. Natalie, do you want to go ahead and come forward? And I apologize, I kind of moved the mic a little bit back. So if you want to pull it towards you, that'll be better, better. All right. Natalie, when you're ready, the city recorder will start her time.
Good evening. I'm Natalie Ranker, 414 Simpson Avenue in North Bend. I was distressed to read the KEZI report of October 21 through 22 entitled, "North Bend Airport Services at Risk After City Administrator Threatened to Break Government Agreement." City Administrator Mill Iron sent a letter to Teresa Cook, the executive director of the Coos County Airport District on July 20th, accusing a TSA officer there of making a false police report of a firearm in the X-ray. As a result, the officer was placed on administrative leave. However, there had not been a violation since the North Bend Police Chief had been notified on two prior occasions, including that day that there would be a test on April 14th to determine police response time. The TSA investigation resulted in correspondence to Ms. Cook stating that Chief McCullough had been contacted by email on 4/13 and in person on 4/14 that a test would be performed on 4/14. The officer at the airport was reinstated, but the statement of his being on administrative leave will remain on his record, even though he never filed a false police report. The July letter also stated that the city was considering terminating its security agreement with the airport. This would, for most purposes, shut down the airport. However, it was brought to the attention of the city that under Oregon law, cities are responsible for providing emergency services in their jurisdiction at no cost. The mayor formed a committee with two city counselors that met with two Coos County County Airport District Board Directors in July after the letter had been sent. According to city directors in July, in, in July, after, oh, I'm sorry. According to City Code 2.04.090, the members of a council committee are subject to confirmation by the council and they shall report back without unneeded delay. No members were confirmed by councilman. There was no mention of the meeting with CCAD until, until the council meeting of October 11th, when the mayor referenced a small ad hoc committee of counselors that met with CCAD. Very little information was passed on and this was not in a very timely manner. Our airport is very important to our residents, our businesses, and our tourists. It is very necessary for all of us to be kept informed about the services that keep it running, smooth, run, a smooth-running operation. This should be an important responsibility of our mayor, our council, and our city administrator. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. All right. Number next is Ken Holker, right? Say your last name correctly. Ken, come on forward. And our city recorder will start the timer whenever you're ready.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to wish you all luck for whatever office you're running for and encourage everybody in the state to vote. That's the biggest thing. And also I want to thank all of you for what you do for the city and state. I want to thank our police department, nurses, doctors, hospitals, and everybody. So good luck and thank you.
All right. Thank you. We truly appreciate that. It's nice to have people here participating in public comment. You hear a lot of stuff out there, but a lot of times people just don't show up and you do, Ken. So we appreciate you for showing up. And I do want to just remind everybody that you have the opportunity to participate in public comment virtually. People can call in. That Zoom function has been really helpful. You can do it online, both in the work sessions and in the city council meetings. So we've really tried to, you know, COVID was some, one couple of good things that happened with COVID is it kind of pushed everybody a little bit forward in having different ways for people to participate. So we appreciate you and thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead then and move on to number five. We've got an agenda item that's titled Historic Historical Context Statement Consultant Presentation. Mr. City Administrator, is this an item here that you wanted to speak to first? It's on, I know our council has information in their packet on page 14.
We'll give you a brief overview.
Okay, I see our Public Works Director coming on forward here, Mr. Ross Denham. Yeah, 60 pages.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, actually our ex-city planner was in charge of this project, but it has come to completion. As part of our CLG and historic preservation process, we had went out for proposals for somebody to review the city and see what elements of the city were available for historical preservation. The primary focus of this particular study was commercial structures, which they identified in their historical context statement for historical structures within the city of North Bend that they recommend be considered for further elevation as historical properties. There were the old Oddfellow's Building on Sherman Avenue, Liberty Theater, Citizens Building, which is at the corner of Virginia Insurance and First National Bank Building. If you were able to read through the entire 60 pages and there's a lot of other structures within the city that exist. However, their focus in this particular case was commercial buildings of significance. There's tribal elements. There are residential elements. There are other elements available for historical listing. And currently, the city has only two on the National Historical Register, which is actually the North Bend Hotel and the McCullough Bridge. So also available online is Lisa from, or is she not available?
No.
Okay. She was invited to be online, so I wasn't who helped produce the historical concept statement. And I can briefly answer some questions. Probably I did do a fairly thorough reading, but I'll see how my memory is because I didn't bring the whole document with me.
And so Ralph, if I may, so we're keeping in good standards with our CLG, our certified local government status. And so this is a grant that you all previously had approved and worked through. We're asking that you approve the context statement, the historical context statement. Our next steps will then be actual training and we anticipate approaching the tribe and seeing that if they will actually conduct the training for us. And so up to this point, we pretty much have done what we call the staff in-kind services or contributing. And then once that training's done, we will then seek reimbursement for that training. So at this point, what's before you is staff recommendation that you approve the North Bend Citywide Historic Context Statement.
Okay, I see that on page 14. Is there a motion from the council?
Mayor?
Yes.
And I, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment.
Should we, should we have a motion first and then have our comment?
I don't care.
Okay, let's, well, let's go ahead and do that. Is there, is there a motion?
Move approval of the historic contact statement concerning the citywide a limited resource survey that's
Okay, heard it first from Counselor Slater, second from Counselor Noroff. Is there any discussion, Counselors Slater?
Yeah, what I wanted to say in that, I did go through the whole thing. And I have to say that it is a superb study, which got not only the historical background way back, but the current stuff, building sizes, structures, pictures, the whole thing. It's an excellent history piece to the point where I decided I want a part of my history collection. So I put it in a binder so I can stick it with the rest of my book. So unlike many studies we have or were required to do, this one has real meat and is of real value. Talking about what the area is, I really commend the department for putting that together and the quality of what it is.
Yeah, agreed. All right. So any other discussion? All right. I have a first and a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor of the city council accepting in the acknowledgements of the historic context statement and limited resource survey prepared by, in 2022 by Paleo West, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number six is the partnership needed to solve the statewide homelessness emergency. And this is page 144 of our packet. Mr. City Administrator, do you have some information on this for us tonight?
So Madam Mayor and Council, certainly it's election season, so you hear a lot of things, but I always say don't allow the facts to get in the way of a good story. You, as a council, has accomplished a lot on trying to address homelessness at multiple fronts. And it isn't done overnight and we recognize that there is a lot of unfunded mandates. And so you serve as council members and you can stop there. But some of you all take on other leadership positions on different boards, committees, and even statewide task force. For instance, you just had Counselor Slater finish up with his statewide responsibilities on the League of Cities. And you have your mayor who just finished her first year of her term with the Oregon Mayors Association. The Oregon Mayors Association, in concert with the League of Cities and also the Association of Counties, has been working to digest, train, and try to move the homelessness issue forward equitably and fairly in the state. And so it's been a concerted effort. They put together, the Oregon Mayors Association put together a 25-member task force. Everything from small cities to large cities and everything in between, so that every point of this state was represented. North Bend had your mayor, Mayor Engelke, serve on that as one of the 25. They collectively worked together on a task force of homelessness. And they have come up with a, a partnership agreement that they want to take and champion to the state legislature that has some teeth. It has a lot of things that they're asking for, including money that can be brought back to the local communities so that it's not on the taxpayers dying to address all this. But it also takes plans. And as you know, concurrently, North Bend, Coos Bay, Coos County is one of the pilots that everyone's looking for as to what we do and how we address this. And so what you have before you is something that's going before every single city council in the entire state, which is a letter from the Oregon Mayors Association, who's asking that the council address it as a resolution in order to endorse it and move forward. So you have the letter before you. Some of the items, as you see, are broken out as a direct allocation. Those are requests Those are requests where money would, if approved by the legislature, would um come back to us. Uh, for such things as abatement, cleanup, environmental mitigation, shelters, hygiene stations, um operational cost and otherwise. Um, uh, you then see a uh area um uh that's broken down for capital allocations. And so, for instance, with the most recent uh September twenty-eighth decision by the Ninth Circuit Court. Uh, the Ninth District Court, they have now taken the Boise case and taken it even further. Um, and the sad thing is, is um, a, a number of us, including our city attorney, all went to recent training classes. Um, I saw a lot of our um partners from throughout Coos County there. And um, we came away with more questions than answers, and that that's unfortunate. Because there's no real guidance in what's being handed down, and it's important that the residents understand. That whoever is sitting on this council after the election. They're going to have to roll up their sleeves because there's a lot of work that has to be done between now. Um, and a new ordinance July first, and that includes a top-down look at all policies, procedures, ordinances, codes, regulations, et cetera. Um, that have anything to do with time, man or place um and homelessness and their Eighth Amendment rights. Um, so under capital allocation, right now, what the uh latest is, is that. Uh, if you do not have somewhere that you can a bed open to put a homeless. Um, there's nothing, very little, if anything, you can do. You can't criminalize it. Um, they have to sleep, they have to go to the restroom, so. Um, under state law, all that is boxed into your geographical location. Back, one of the um examples being given in the training is suppose Coos Bay, North Bend and um Coos County. Come in and we all get in together and we decide to open up a shelter, say, uh, in Coos Bay and um. Uh, North Bend um provides staffing and the county provides the land. Um, uh, will that meet the test of the state law? And they're like. Right now, no. And so there's a lot of things that have to occur, so we have to look at these potential direct allocations for capital. Um, to potentially actually have, you know, large-scale shelter that can accommodate all homeless. And whether or not you want to snub your nose at this, these are people in your community that. We are going to be forced to address. Bar none. Um, the latest out of the Ninth Circuit says it's class action um status. So there are other communities that have now had their entire parks, um sidewalks, everything taken over. Um, and it's because uh they had existing uh code. So this is an overall request for support. This is not coming from staff. This is coming from the Oregon Mayors Association. Um, this has been highly publicized in the news media. We uh cross-posted uh it on our website and our social media. And it's also the letters included in the packet. Um, so this is a, a staff recommendation um based on the request from the Oregon Mayors Association, the League of Cities. Um, that you uh get behind behind uh the requested partnership. And um support it throughout the uh capital process. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, is there a motion from the council? I know we don't have necessarily prepared motion here on the paper, um, but um. Really, what as what the city administrator was saying is that this is something that the Oregon Mayors Association. Um, has been working on as a task force that they have served on. Um, we've met for months now trying to put together what that ask would look like. And um, and they are moving, um, the Oregon Mayors Association is moving forward with that ask, best based on the recommendations from. Um, the group of people that served on that. And um, the, as the city administrator was saying, we would be looking for um basically a motion to um support.
To sign on, the city to sign on.
For the city to sign on to the um. The, let's see, how would I word that here? Um, city to sign on to the partnership needed to solve the statewide homelessness um. Emergency plan. Got that, Bill?
I'm working. Mm-hmm. Um. I'll make a motion that. Um. We approve the city of North Bend to join in the partnership needed to solve a statewide homeless emergency.
Right.
Okay.
Will that work?
You do it.
All right, I hear a first from um Counselor Richardson and a second from Counselor Gleason. Is there a discussion among the council?
Any more?
None, no, no more discussion.
Let's move.
Okay. All right, all in favor of the motion?
Okay, to approve the city of North Bend to join in with the partnership needed to solve that statewide homeless emergency.
Yes, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And um, I do know that the Oregon Mayors Association will be planning a press conference later this week, if not, or on Monday, so we'll keep you posted. Um, with that, uh, when more information comes out. Okay, thank you. Number, um, yeah, number seven on the agenda is the award of the Pony Creek Storm Sewer Project to Lasky Clifton, Inc. Uh, Mr. Denham is coming up to give us a quick overview of the quotes before us. And the recommendation from the uh cities, yeah.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council, uh, staff received two quotes for repairing the. Forty-two inch pipe that runs through Pony Village. That the city maintains this particular piece of corrugated metal pipe that was put in in the. Mid to late sixties is full of holes. And although it may last through the winter. It's our belief it has just as good a possibility to cause an additional problems. This winter, we did receive two prices, although they were. What I would call end-of-season prices. With the price escalation due to fuel and everything else, things can continue to go up too, so with. Looking at the prices and the timing and the risk. Staff recommends we award the bid to Lasky Clifton, Inc. An amount of ninety-eight or ninety-two thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. Uh, to get this thing completed by January first, twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
What's the depth of that, Ralph?
It's only about eight feet, but it's in the title influence. Um, there's a tide gate on it that leaks. Um. So elevation-wise, although it's only about seven to eight feet deep. Um, elevation-wise is from about elevation three on a titled item to. About elevation ten to eleven is what Top Twenty Village's parking lot is.
I was going to ask, um, whose responsibility the tide gate is if that thing fails?
The tide gate is ours. Um. It's an old waterman gate, which was classically used throughout the sixties, fifties, forties. Up until just recently, when we went to more fish-friendly material. Um. The tide gate itself doesn't leak badly enough that it's a issue under a normal storm. Issue, but it is going to allow water to get. Back when they open enough water back into the pipe. Um. They can use a large blow-up plug, similar methods, but still the soil saturated in that area because of it leaking all the time, so it's creating some issues.
Okay, is there a motion from the council?
Uh, move to award Pony Village Storm Sewer Project to Lastic Clifton, Inc. and the amount of ninety-two thousand.
That's second.
Heard a first from Counselor Gleason and a second from Counselor Richardson. Is there any further questions or discussion? All in favor of awarding the Pony Village Storm Creek Sewer Project to Lasky Clifton, Inc. an amount of ninety-two thousand eight hundred and twenty, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ralph. Number eight on the agenda is we have um a discussion. This is November and December council meeting schedules. Uh, Mr. City Administrator, do you want to walk us through the schedule here?
So your current um schedule for the remaining of the year is November eighth, twenty-second, thirteenth and twenty-seventh. Um, generally, in the past, you've had discussions about holidays. Um, also, um, it's um. Uh, we will be having uh orientation with the uh newly elected council members. Um, prior to going into um strategic planning in January. Um, so this is um the, will the council as to. Uh, what if any council meetings it wants to uh cancel? Um, surrounding the holidays and travel plans and things like that, because you have to have your forum, so.
Yes. Um, so let's see, and. The, remind me of where Thanksgiving falls on this, the.
Um, so the November twenty-second, then you have Thanksgiving uh on that Thursday.
Okay.
And then you have obviously Christmas on the twenty-fifth. Um. And um, so the twenty-seventh would be uh two days later.
Gotcha. Well, I think it would make sense for sure to counsel the December twenty-seventh meeting. Um, do you agree with that? And. Um. Was there some concern then with um travel plans then for Thanksgiving week as well if we were, is that what was a potential consideration of canceling the twenty-second?
Um. I know what I've experienced with the last two years in your travel, so it's really your travel. Staff's going to be here. Um, and uh, like I said, um, uh, um. The eighth, and then I think they have the twenty-one days now before they have to certify. The election, is that? Right, I, I thought it got extended.
That's what I heard.
So basically, we'll, we'll know when, so we'll be able to do um, um, the council staff orientation. Um, before we can um actually get them sworn in and installed uh from certification, so that'll all be up in the air.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so.
What are the thoughts of the? Other counselors? I know we have a couple counselors rotating off. But for those of you who know that you'll be here.
The twenty-second and the twenty-seven just because of. Possibility of travel versus planning and not being there.
I think like, I think I'm fishing in Mexico up till the twenty-first, so.
Of November or December?
Of November.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that Tuesday before Thanksgiving is really tricky. Um, if something comes up, you could call a special meeting if we had to or.
Absolutely.
Do something on the phone, like I'm almost tempted to say. Let's cancel the twenty-second and the twenty-seven pending any urgent items. We've even, you know, you could do an all Zoom meeting if we had to approve something.
Right.
So that would make, that would make sense to me.
It's like a great deal to me.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, if I hear Counselor Nordoff and Gaul and Gleason thinking that's a good idea, then we'll go ahead and. Yes, well, you're gonna be here anyways, even though you're retiring, Counselor Slater, you're not gonna. Fade off into the distance, are you?
Well, I'll be here for public comment.
He'll be here for public comment. Perfect, okay.
I'll give my three.
All right, um.
So if you want to do a motion because uh you have it set up in your charter, so you actually will take actual.
Is there a motion from the council to cancel the twenty-second and the twenty?
Move cancel. Uh, council meetings scheduled from November twenty-second and December twenty-second. Twenty twenty-two.
Okay, I have a uh first from Counselor Gleason and a second from Counselor Gaul. Any further discussion? And all in favor of counseling the um November twenty-second, twenty twenty-two and December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two council meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we, um, number nine, there's uh no need for that agenda item because we do not have any action. That we need to take from any executive session, so we'll go ahead and move to the city administrators' report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Um, as usual, the uh city administrators' report is online. You can see it on Facebook, on the website and uh other social media. Um, want to point out the visitor information center. We're getting rave reviews about the new bike station that's up there. Um, and in fact, uh, someone just gave us a nice four-star review. I didn't even know we took those on our. Google site, but I just learned something today because it came through. Um, so that's been a great addition. Um. The uh Downtown Main Street program um has really worked to um uh involve a lot of um uh the businesses uh in and around um North Bend. For the Candy Crawl Halloween event. That's gonna be um this Saturday, it's the twenty-ninth, so we'll be having a trunk-or-treat. We'll be having a downtown candy crawl. We'll be having games, giveaways, and there'll actually even be a movie at the Liberty Theater. And that movie.
Is it ghost?
Casper, there you go. I knew that was a ghost. I remember the ghost.
Yeah.
Casper, it's Casper. There you go. I don't have children, so I always um uh screw up with these things. The trunk-and-treat's gotta be held at Grant Circle um right here uh, uh, City Hall. Um, yes, there'll be a tent there, um, so rain or shine. Um, and uh, right now, we have twenty-four businesses uh that kids can go down and trick-or-treat throughout um uh the community downtown. Um, there's a nice little um walking map and um they've gotten high-tech with these QR codes. I don't know what QR stands for, but you just. Point your camera at it and it opens stuff, so it must open the map and guide you where to go. Um, and so uh, and then the movie is at the theater at three o'clock. Um, all of the information is on our website, our Facebook. It's in the new media. It's in the city administrators' report, so a lot of stuff happening. I think it all starts about eleven AM. Um, meanwhile, the fire department, um, uh, woo, um. Um, apparently they rearranged Safeway because I had to go there and uh get some emergency buns. Um, because the fire department went over there to do safety uh presentation and uh. Well, uh. They can go through hamburgers and hot dogs faster than a uh, a blackjack dealer in Vegas. Um, so I had to go and get some emergency buns and I walked in, I freaked out because they rearranged everything, but I found them. So it took me a little longer, um, but I, I, I was expecting the, you know. I, I got close enough to the food just to toss them to them, um, but it was a great event. They taught them a lot of um. Uh, fire safety, they about fifty folks there, and then um on the twenty-first, um, they had the um. Uh, uh, open house at the fire department, and even despite the rain, uh, they all, they, 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 they do what the fire department does. They just said, hey. Uh, let's make the best of this. They, they swapped out some of the stuff, put it inside and vice versa. Um, the library um has been giving away pumpkins. Um, they, they um have never run out of pumpkins in the last several years, but uh this year they ran out of pumpkins. They already gave away fifty pumpkins, um, but the library does what the library does. They went out and bought twenty more pumpkins. Um, and so uh, someone will get the great pumpkin and um, uh, so that's going along real well. Um, and let's not forget that we took three hundred folks to the Happy Ranch and then I had one find the great pumpkin. Um, uh, that youth did not realize that um for that size pumpkin, there was an extra charge, but I understand someone took care of that charge. So uh, the, the kid got his pumpkin, like, how, 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 what? Like forty, forty-some pounds? Yeah, it was, I, I, he, he went through that pumpkin patch until he found that pumpkin. And then um, a, a, and then I now realize why it's uh, what did it say on the agenda? Special recognitions. Now I know why.
I know why too.
I know exactly why, so I'm just gonna leave it to you, Madam Mayor, because you figured it out.
Yeah.
Um, and uh, with that said, the last thing is a great update at the pool. Um, you know, Public Works has been great to work with, um, and uh, we, we've been juggling. Uh, the supply chain issue. God bless us. Um, we've been interviewing uh candidates um uh for the aquatics director and um. I'm glad to say, you know, that it's like commiserating. You get on, it's like, oh, well, a pump, that's nothing, and then they tell you about the issues they're having. Um, but um, uh, we, we are told that the uh windows um have been secured. Um, we've been waiting since January on this and had to go through the insurance, and then you had to find a vendor and they measured everything. So the windows um should be um onsite about November fourteenth. Um, uh, uh. Ralph really worked the, the, the phones and the vendors uh and, and um, they came through. We found a backup pump. And so rather than cancel the other pump, we said, send them both, because pumps fail. And this way, we're not in a catastrophic failure and say, folks, the pump folk, this way we'll have one, and um, it was nominal cost add that second backup pump. Um, so um, uh, the one um is expected to arrive sometime in January. Uh, the other one will get here about April. Or May or June or whenever it gets here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, the pool painting, um, ju- just minor little things, but it, it's otherwise uh complete. Um, we posted photos online. Um, and then they've been doing a lot of plumbing work um in order to finish up so that we actually have. Hot showers in the showers. I mean, wow, like, imagine that. Um, that, that was a uh interesting thing to make. Anyway, that is the city administrators' report. Lots of great things happen in the city, a lot of things that I did not comment on. Um, that are out there, so I encourage folks to go read it so that you can see where all your tax dollar money is going, so thank you.
All right, perfect, thank you. Um, that takes us to um any committee reports. Do we have any committees that's met? No fire? Um, committees, okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on then to council comments, so we'll go ahead and start down here with um our. Our Tim Slater, our Counselor Slater.
Well, you know, I thought over this a little bit and really what I wanted to uh to take my three minutes. Tonight was uh to recognize uh excellence in uh attitude and results and uh. And although it might embarrass him, I really wanna uh focus on this and. Appreciated uh working with Bill Richardson over these last ten years. He served eighteen years as. As part of this council and both he and his wife Becky uh are important parts of the community. Uh, and they, they assist in a variety of ways, but you know, Bill, besides loving and. And they they assist in a variety of ways. But you know, Bill, besides loving and taking care of North Bend issues, has demonstrated a community-based vision where he truly believes the and demonstrates that that the rising tide lifts all boats. As president of the Egyptian Theater piece, he actually get the basics, which I believe helped out tremendously on the LTOB changes and things which have gone on that way. His business, his business serves the area very well. Not only the brush pickup, but they supply free things at times when it's necessary to do that. So he has a very common sense and community-based approach going in and that. He's been part of Bus Jam. He's in the Christmas celebration and tremendous amount more. He's an excellent example of what service is all about, what sustained services is all about. You know, it's always been my premise that people could do something wonderful for one year or maybe two, and then get out before everything falls apart. But those that they can sustain excellence and make it happen again and again and bring people along with them. Those are the leaders that you really look for and and Bill is one of those. So I just wanted to say I truly appreciate the time that you've put in. I appreciate knowing you and working with you and the city of North Bend has been well served by you.
Yeah, that was very nice, Counselor Slater. Counselor Nordoff, what do you have tonight?
I I I also thank both of you gentlemen for the amount of years that you have put in to contributing to the city. It's really, really inspiring and impressive. I'm really happy to see that there's a bike fix-it shop because we have a lot of bike traffic. They they come right down my street, Mead Avenue, Colorado to Mead and then down you know, zigzag over to Virginia. So that's really a great idea and really, really, I think, an excellent move. Somebody's, somebody deserves a pat on the back for that idea. I think it's great. And I don't have a voice. Sorry about that.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Counselor Goll?
Well, it's always, you know, I guess my heart's at the fire station and it's always good to hear that Brownie pulls another one out of the hat. And then to have North Bend Bulldogs have a national championship of anything. Pretty cool. I mean, I I know I'm not a bowler by any means, but I was, you know, I was, played a lot of sports at North Bend and man, a national championship, that's pretty cool. And there's a lot of really good stuff going on here in the city and I know pretty proud to be on this council, you know, sitting with Slater and Richardson and Larry and everything and but man, I I don't want, I don't like getting laughed at. We've been getting laughed at a little bit lately, so that's that's what I'm gonna go with.
Okay. All right, Counselor Richardson?
Well, I just want to say that it has been a pleasure to work with Tim and and all of you. Really, it's it was a decision that was not easy for me not to run again, but I just gotta take some time for myself a little bit. I think more than anything in my job, you know, just kind of figure things out for a while. Try to, you know, focus on my family and it's not that I don't care about this town because everybody knows I do and you know, it's time for, my wife said term limits. Anyway, it's just, you know, it's it's been a great, you know, eighteen years. It's just, it's unbelievable how fast that went. You know, it's just like, you know, I was, I was chosen by the council to do an interim position. I was on the school board at the time. So I did the same thing Eric did. I did the school board and the city council for a couple of years and you know, and I figured out that the city council was way easier than the school board for a lot of reasons. But.
Sometimes, huh?
Yeah, well, most of the time. And you know, trying to go through this whole thing without an agenda is is difficult at times, but I always tried to focus on that. I never wanted to, you know, have an agenda for any reason. I just wanted to give open communication and try to keep open dialogue and and it's worked really well. I got to work with some phenomenal people. Susan Ottemiller, you know, she was the and Janet Rubin and you know, this, it goes on and on, you know, with Howard Graham and you know, of course, you know, just a bunch of different people, a bunch of different staff. It's just been a really really enlightening thing for me to learn how government business practices work because they're totally different from from the private sector. You know, the way the money's spent, the way that, you know, you can't move money here and there and you know, it's all earmarked and it's just totally different than regular business. And, you know, the new council people are gonna learn that and I, you know, it's it's just a tough thing to to kind of figure out. But again, like I say, working with you, Tim, it's been a pleasure. We've done it quite, quite often and learning that. And everybody, it's just, you feel like family more than you feel like, you know, part of the thing, but we're all did it together, you know, downtown, the Liberty Theater, you know, all those things were all part of what we all did and accomplished because we did have a goal of making North Bend better. And it's better than it ever has been and you know, you know, with Mary Engelke at the helm, it's it's looking really good for the future too. And with David, you know, chief, it's awesome. You know, chief. You're gonna miss them all. You're gonna miss them all.
Now, you do know you all have to come back for two more meetings, right? Okay.
Yeah, I kinda wanted to like just kind of get some of this out of it. There's a lot more.
Yeah.
Anyway, it's been a pleasure and I really, really appreciate all you people for all you do. And I appreciate that, Senator, to every single one of you. Whether you agree with us or not. We're all good.
That's great.
Thank you.
So what I'm hearing you say, if Eric continued on school board and council for another fourteen years, he'll be all white in the hair like you. Oh, Counselor Lee, since you have any comments tonight?
I'm sick of working with both of you. I can't wait to get gone. I congratulations both of you for putting in the time. I remember when I was in eighth grade and I wrote a letter to Mayor Tim Slater asking for a crosswalk around my house and I never heard back. I had to join the city council. I still don't have that that crosswalk. It's still not there. I still haven't done anything about it either, so I don't. No, congratulations both of you. I'm surprised that you guys tried to not give less meetings. So you didn't have any.
Yeah, I thought about that.
I don't, I mean, in the words of Larry, I don't have it.
You don't have anything? All right. Well, I have a couple things here. Oh, Larry is online. We didn't forget about Larry. Larry, is there anything you need, wanna say tonight from your iPad? See if his, if his volume. He's, he's there. But he may be there without great service. Okay, all right. Well, I have a couple things I want to make sure that I give a special congratulations to Kimberly Warren. She works in our payroll and our fine, works in payroll and finance department. And she got married on Monday. So Kimberly and Brett Ecker. Congratulations to Kimberly and Brett Ecker. So they got married. So love is in bloom. For this other piece of information.
Probably use my council comments to give some special recognition here. So Chief McCullough, will you join me up here so that we can? I want to say a few words. Believe it or not, it has been a year since you came in on this interim chief. And from what I understand correctly, we've got you for at least another six months. You didn't extend to that time. And yes, but he deserved a huge round of applause. So Chief McCullough and Captain Metz had come on to the city of North Bend. We needed some extra support and you're so honored that they made the decision to join the city of North Bend. So it's been one year and we're celebrating your one year anniversary. And I just wanted to take a moment to highlight some of the things that we have done in just those twelve months. So over the course of the last year, they transferred the dispatch services to the Coos North Ninety One Dispatch Center to address critical staffing shortages and public safety concerns. A move that is expected to save taxpayers seven hundred and twenty-three thousand four hundred dollars through the fiscal year of twenty twenty five. They changed computer aid dispatch and records management systems to improve efficiency and accuracy in reporting crime statistics. They've implemented mandatory training in critical areas, including defense tactics, firearms, and use of force training and resurification. They utilized federal grant dollars to offset the purchase of new patrol cars to replace unsafe high mileage vehicles with hefty repair bills, saving the taxpayers even more money. They've eliminated mandatory overtime for restructuring of payroll shifts. Again, a great cost-saving measure. They promoted two patrol officers to sergeant status to ensure each shift has supervisory oversight. They've standardized their uniforms for all shifts, including class A uniforms to communicate the level of authority and experiences of the officers in court and ceremonial events. They completed renovations to the police squad and reporting writing room. They remodeled former squad report writing room for use as a multi-purpose training conference room. They developed and hired a community resource officer with Braga CSO who assists and relieves law enforcement personnel in the performance of various police duties. They're establishing relationships with the community members and opening up the lines of communication through community engagement efforts, including community events at the recent Top of the Town event at the Liberty Theater. They've leveraged and sought additional federal grant dollars for a community resource officer, so that's a CRO, who will work closely with community partners and the sources they provide to assist with outreach services to homelessness, individuals, and families in our community. Their top-down review of organizational strengths and weaknesses with extensive succession planning and staff development for future management positions has been thorough. They have significant improvements to efficiency staffing, deployment schedules, overtime, and department operations. And they initiated a pay and analysis and study of similar agencies in Oregon, including the Associated Consensus and Benefits. And that is a lot in just the last twelve months. So again, a huge round of applause. We need to keep for at least another six months. And I just, I don't know if the city administrator or the council has anything else they want to say, but we're so happy of all the thorough work that they have that Captain Metz and Chief McCullough have done.
We're very glad.
That's true. I've walked, worked twice. It's been an honor and privilege to be able to step in and assist where we have. I've been a longtime resident of the city of North Bend. We moved here in nineteen eighty-eight. My wife says this is where we're gonna live. So this is where we're at. Been in the same house on Union Street for thirty plus years and kids are moving away, so we're gonna go visit, but we're, we plan to be here for quite some time.
We're so happy to have you here in the community and thank you. On the behalf of everybody in the city of North Bend, from bottom of our heart, we thank you.
Thank you so much.
Let's see, that was the end of council comments. We've moved some other items to other business. And I think it was just those two agenda items with the meeting minutes that we wanted to take another look at. Let's go, let me double check real quick here. My papers are disorganized. We have, let's go ahead and start with the work session ones, the item from the work session ones first. Let's see.
I didn't bring my work section packet that Michael. That was, oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and start with that one first. Thank you.
Okay, so I had asked for consideration of amending the minutes for the it was the September twenty seventh council meeting. Because there was a recess taken and there's no, there's no statement as to why the recess were taken and there's no statement as to what happened when we came back out of recess. And the recess was so that the city administrator could speak with the city attorney concerning my citations, not an arrest. There is arrests are arrests, citations are citation. I received something that if you didn't know, it would look like a parking ticket. That is a citation. So that he could discuss with the city attorney the altercation that I had with a neighboring landlady on the sidewalk. So he wanted to discuss this with the city attorney and when he came out, we came out of the recess. And I thought the meeting was over. I left and I wish I hadn't, but I did. But the statement on the video, the the audio statement that the city manager says was that the he and the mayor would be consulting with the city attorney the next day, depending on the mayor's schedule. And I just think that that is significant enough to include in the council minutes. Because it was significant enough to call a recess. So that's, that's, I'm not gonna speculate as to what they said during their phone call, their chat the next day, but I think it's significant, if it's significant enough to call a recess, it's significant enough to be included in the council minutes. Now, the staff did do a verbatim translation from the audio and for some reason, it was not included. So that it can't be reviewed unless the council were to decide to actually do the amendment and bring it forward to, for discussion and approval. That's my understanding. So that was supposed to happen at the work session. We didn't have a work session and now we're almost done with the council meeting, but I guess I would move that you amend the city minutes to show the reason for the recess and the comment that was made before and after the recess. That's my motion. So that there, it's an accurate representation.
And just for clarification, are these minutes that we've, we've already approved? We we approve these as a council?
Would be amending a set of approved minutes. That's true.
Madam Mayor, you have your city attorney on and so this is a, so you have to follow your council rules. And so the council rules allows a council member to request a work session agenda for discussion. If there's consensus during the work session to put it on a future agenda, then the city administrator has up to thirty days to do so. And so what was conveyed to the counselor was that process. Obviously, the meeting was canceled. So what really needs to occur is if the council gains consensus with the counselor, then the request would be for staff to put it on the next agenda for approval. It's just, that's the process. So it's just unfortunate. Your, your charter doesn't actually refer to work sessions. Work sessions are really called by the city administrator. And so you have the meeting, but you have ordinance, which is council rules. So you have to follow the ordinance because you take an oath of office to uphold it. So it's not a request to amend and and I would
Okay.
ask the counselor to respectfully withdraw that. And so what you're doing is discussing it for a consensus as to whether or not you want to move forward. Now, to address why it wasn't included, well, it's because your council rules. So I consulted with the city attorney very painstakingly, not on one occasion, but two occasions. And then myself and the city attorney conveyed back to the counselor that that was the process for the rules. So that's what you're really seeking at this point is a consensus of the council. And if you want consensus, then it would move to your next agenda item for potential adoption of those minutes. Sounds kind of cryptic, but it's processed. And I'm sorry, but process sometimes gets in the way. And so, but as the city attorney said, well, the audio and the video is online, is it? Yes. And the official recording, which we have, is also here. So it's not as if they're not preserved. It's all there. So, thank you.
Counselors, is there a motion? All right, I was, well. Are we looking, okay, so we are, make sure I'm understanding.
You can take a motion to push this to your next agenda for adoption. That's up to you and then, and then we would give you revised minutes. And then you could adopt it at your next minute. That's up to you. It's the will of council.
I make a motion that we place this on the next council agenda to. Discuss and have a vote to approve the revised minutes. And thank you for the explanation and the process. It takes a while to think and it's, it's not real straightforward. That's my motion.
Is there a second from anyone on the council? Okay, all right, then the motion fails and we do have. It, we have consulted our attorney, we have everything documented, there is transparency and everything. And we've already adopted those minutes. So we'll go ahead and move on to the next set. Yes.
If I may, the counselor, as is always, per council rules, can always submit a dissent. There's a timetable to when the actual action was taken and so it would have been started on the time. So I would say consult council rules as to what that timetable is, but I believe I brought that up last time as well. Just wanna make sure and remind you that that is your council rules.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, and so we moved, let's see, we pulled from the consent calendar, the draft minutes. Counselor Nordoff, you wanted to pull the draft minutes of October eleventh. That was part, that was A of the consent calendar. So did you wanna speak to this for a moment?
Yes. All right, so I was concerned with the, the draft minutes. For the October. Straight here, draft minutes for the October eleventh. Council meeting. My specific concern is that during the, the mayor's comments. There's one sentence that says. She comments on the progress of. The downtown and tentative League of Oregon Cities Conference with Counselor Slater and City Administrator David Millar. Gave praise to Counselor Slater for the work he had put in over the years, also met and discussed with Coos County Airport District members. And actually, I took a listen to that. That comment on the reporting and it was over two minutes long. And so. She hits the highlights that she, she was invited to. This, the, the first sentence, I do just, also just do want to take a few minutes just real quick. To update the council on a meeting that a few of the counselors and I had with some of the members of the airport. This started a few weeks ago after an idea from one of the other Coos County Airport District Board members. I worked with my city administrator who helped us organize a small ad hoc meeting with two other of the Coos County Airport District members. And so I had our council president, the counselor, also Counselor Slater join me. It was great because Counselor Slater has so much knowledge of the history and the relationship of the airport.
Is there, Counselor Nordoff, is there, I'm gonna, Counselor Nordoff, I'm gonna stop you right now. Is there a part of these minutes that you would like to discuss?
What I'm going to say is that when you meet for an ad hoc committee meeting, that is per the council rule.
Okay, I'm.
On that.
I'm gonna bring our attorney online right now. Mark, look, I think we have a problem with what Counselor Nordoff understands. Okay, I don't, I am talking right now. I need you to stop. I'm gonna take a recess. I'm gonna take a recess, city administrator, because I think we are out of control right now. Okay? I wanna take three minutes recess.